All right, let's go ahead and call the Land Development Code. I'm sorry, yeah, the Land Development Code revision.
And Mayor Council, I'll just kick this off. So there are three briefings that are scheduled for today's work session. And we could spend hours talking about each one of these. But I did want to at least have a high-level overview and update for council because it has been seven weeks since we last came together in a work session. And so the purpose is really to provide some insights into what has been happening over the last several weeks. There have been documents that have been sent to you. And so we're really going to go over some of those. And then if there are questions and feedback, happy to take this. But this is not meant to be a comprehensive update. It's really meant to say, here's what work has been going on, and here's what we want to be teeing you up for in future discussions.
Thank you, City Manager Rodney Gonzalez. I'm the Assistant City Manager for Economic Opportunity and Affordability. And with me today are Anique Bode and Brent Lloyd, two members of the leadership team with regard to the Land Development Code rewrite. They represent only the tip of the iceberg when it comes to the staff that is dedicated towards this project. And there are countless others that are working tirelessly to meet the expectations of council. As the city manager had mentioned, on July 22nd, he sent down an update. The update was a quick brief of where we are, and more importantly, the timeline that council can expect to receive the Land Development Code. We've had good positive feedback with regard to the timeline. And so we wanted to use this opportunity to go over some of that memo update from July 22nd and to talk about the work that the staff is doing. And so with that, I will turn it over to Anique and Brent.
All right. Good morning, Mayor and Council, Anique Bode. So what we've been up to, the timeline includes starting this month. You know, since May 2nd, since the direction, really, the cross-functional, multidisciplinary team has been working very hard collaboratively to look at the council direction and figure out a starting point from version three of the previous code to moving forward in a positive way with the clear direction that we received. Starting this month and through September, we've already scheduled one-on-ones with many of you to allow you all really to ask questions on what we're doing and deep dive into a lot of aspects of the broad topics of the code, similar to what we did with the Strategic Mobility Plan. We were able to meet with all of you early and often so that we could have a mutual understanding of how we were moving forward. And so we expect that to happen in the next two months. We also have coming up in August, the Housing and Planning Committee will have the code on the agenda specifically to talk about zoning districts and per the direction on how we are changing those districts and get into some details on that. And then the Mobility Committee on August 21st will be an opportunity, as always, to go deeper into the transportation chapter. So currently also, since May 2nd, the team has been making ourselves available to the community. We've been invited to speak on panels. We've been invited to one-on-one meetings with commissioners from boards and commissions, from other community groups. This week, I have a meeting with the Parks Foundation Coalition to talk about the code. People have been very interested on what we're doing, and we're making ourselves available to take information and give information. You know, testing as well as feedback is inherent in how we're building this code. We need to test it internally as well as continue to receive feedback from the community. So we invite the community to prepare, to look at the May 2nd direction and provide me and/or Brent with information that they may have about the council direction or about their neighborhoods. We're happy to consider that. And also to prepare for when the code is released, October 4th, which I'm going to pass over to Brent right now to talk about what happens. I'm talking about what's happening now, up until the code is released, October 4th. And so whatever neighborhoods stakeholders can do right now to ask for information, meet with us, to be prepared after October, we invite that. And so with that, I'll hand it over to Brent to talk about what to expect after October 4th.
Thanks, Rodney and Anique. Brent Lloyd, Development Officer with Development Services. And as Anique mentioned, October 4th is going to be a big day. That will be the day that we provide an online publication of the code as well as the map. And additionally, I want to highlight another aspect of our release. We're going to have a staff report that will endeavor to provide a comprehensive overview of the code, to speak to different audiences with different levels of understanding and engagement in land development, and to really foreground council's policy direction and go through the decisions that staff had to make in crafting provisions that respond to all the different aspects of council's May 2nd policy direction. Additionally, during the month of October, which is, I think, going to be a big month for all of us on the core team and the leadership team, as well as you all and members of the public, we have several events and opportunities planned to provide a forum for public comment and feedback. We're working with Peter Park, our consultant, to sort of help flesh out the details of some of these, some of the things I'm about to describe. But we definitely have consensus at a high level on kind of what the goals are. One key aspect will be ongoing and regular office hours. And office hours, I think, were one successful aspect of the prior process. And essentially, they will be an opportunity at set times throughout the week for members of the public to, and boards and commissioners as well, to meet with members of the dedicated core team, the auxiliary team, and on occasion, the leadership team as well, to really deep dive into different aspects of the code and ask questions and provide comments. And it's our hope that these sorts of interactions, which will make ourselves available for on a regular basis, will help to build understanding, some areas of agreement, and then help to crystallize the key issues about which there's going to be debate in the legislative process. Additionally, Anique mentioned there will be a public testing. And the public testing, like the internal testing, will be anchored to presentations by design professionals on how projects are buildable under the code, the potential impediments and changes that could be made to sort of facilitate actual construction of projects consistent with council's policy direction. But unlike the, I think, the internal testing, the focus of the public testing will be broader. There will be an opportunity for members of the public to, you know, observe the testing and then ask questions of staff regarding different aspects of the code that are highlighted during the testing process. We envision as well an open house of some kind. There are different ideas for how that would work that are being discussed. But in the prior process, there were, we had a couple opportunities, I believe, where there was a dedicated space set aside where different teams were set up to really provide information, presentations, and just live interaction with the public on key elements of the code. And so we envision an open house that will be similar to that, that will have a large chunk of time set aside for that sort of, that sort of interaction. A critical component as well will be the published notice that we'll work on with the Lot Department. That will be noticed, published notice for the Planning Commission and City Council public hearings. So I think those are the, those are the key elements of the process going forward up through the Planning, up through Planning Commission. We expect, I forgot to mention, that office hours will go on beyond Planning Commission. We want that to be, I think there will be times, depending on schedules and what all is going on, where they'll be more limited than at other times. But we want office hours to be a key feature of the process going forward through Planning Commission and in council as well. So with that, we're available to answer any questions.
And from our presentation, I just want to thank Anique and Brent and the entire team working on this. They've taken your policy direction seriously, and they are going through it, and they are working to rewrite the code using that policy direction. It's an exciting project for all of us. We're glad to be working on it. And we look forward to working with council as we get to this next stage.
I like having the review, even just the touch base. I hope we have it at successive work sessions. Because I think it's, while October 4th is obviously going to be a big day, my hope is that it's not as big as it might otherwise have been because, over the course between now and then, we've socialized and you have brought a lot of the work that's going on and what you guys are thinking and how you're interpreting or taking us through the instructions that have been given. So that people, when they see the document and materials out on October 4th, I mean, to a large degree, there are no surprises because everybody knew kind of where that was going and what that was going to be. So I appreciate these kinds of opportunities. We don't have a lot of work sessions that are scheduled in September. If there are needs for, you know, a 15-minute touch base, just to say, hey, we just want to, you know, bring this to the, to the public knowledge. We have a lot of meetings in September. We could always say, set by agenda, you know, 15 minutes for you guys to be able to, to report back. I think that would be helpful. And I had one conversation with you that I do want to kind of just elevate publicly that we've discussed. There were several neighborhoods, folks in neighborhoods and neighborhood associations that have come and asked the question that when the, when the code and the maps come out, there's obviously going to be, the maps consistent with the direction that the council has given is going to have certain capacities and certain things that are achieved with respect to neighborhoods. And the question was, if a neighborhood wanted to come back to the Planning Commission or to the council and say, okay, we've taken the map that was done consistent with this council direction, we would like the council or the Planning Commission to consider an alternate for this neighborhood or this area that still achieves, achieves all of the things in terms of capacity or use or otherwise, still achieves all the things that were in the map as, as prepared by the staff, would they have the opportunity to be able to present that and have that considered? My understanding is that the answer to that question was yes. Is that right?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. With parameters, as you, as you pointed out. And, you know, we'll have to figure out what the details look like with regards to looking at the housing capacity particularly and the affordability particularly as those changes are presented. But I believe we'll have the ability to do that with the tools that, that we have through our consultants and through the staff to be able to assess what those revisions look like. So yeah, the answer is yes.
And that would be great. I mean, as you go through this and we get closer to that point, kind of guidelines or directions to a neighborhood as to what it would be needing to do or how it might organize, something like that, I think would be really helpful. So thanks for that.
We anticipate as well, and I meant to mention this in my comments, that there will be a supplemental staff report provided in advance of Planning Commission. And we, it's not our intent that that, you know, be an addendum like was done before where there's whole rewritten provisions, but rather just a punch list of changes that staff believes are consistent with council's policy direction and supports, based on the feedback received in October and before during the, you know, the meetings that we're having now. So I think there will be an opportunity potentially to include changes along those lines in that report. And that would then be something that Planning Commission can consider and potentially incorporate into their recommendation as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anything else on this before we move on? Sir, Mayor?
I was going to move on.
Kathy, did you have something?
I do. I have a couple of questions. I just want to be clear. Thanks very much for the presentation and the overview. Can you help me understand the office hours? I know on our timeline, it talks about office hours in August. Are there office hours now? Are those community office hours? No, it's not in the timeline. I thought it was, in one of the descriptions, it talks about district meetings by request, which can happen as early as now. And I know my office has reached out to try to schedule one. Are the office hours that were described October on, or are there office hours now too?
The envision was October on. Once the code is released, so that if individuals have questions about their particular property or neighborhood as a whole, as it relates to the published code, that they could come get those specific questions answered. And it would, it would be October through, through December.
Thank you. And so I just want to be, I just need to say that, you know, I'm glad that you're building in a lot of information sessions. I know, you know, there's probably not a neighborhood meeting I go to where this doesn't arise. And people do have lots of questions. I think there's a big difference between the direction and actually seeing it, seeing how that direction gets implemented in the code. And in many places, there were, there was language that makes it, it's not completely clear how it would come out. You know, the affordable, the piece about missing middle housing and whether there would be an affordability component in those increased entitlements, I think, was, was stated in such a way that, you know, make best efforts or something like that. So, you know, I think the, and even the transition zone from two to five houses. So there are, there are many things about which, I would just add that there are many things about which, you know, people will ask me again and again and again in these meetings. And I have to say, you know, we'll, we'll just have to see what the proposal looks like from staff. So I do think, you know, when people saw the timeline, they are concerned. I'm hearing lots of concerns about having just one meeting before, one, just, just one hearing before the Planning Commission, just one hearing before council. And so I hope that we will be flexible and make sure that people understand, understand their opportunities for feedback before and that we as a council will also make sure that everyone has an opportunity to provide voice to this. While we have been talking about this a long time, the draft is going to be different from the draft I saw before. And it's going to be a lot of material to digest in a very short amount of time. And so, you know, it's important to me that people have an opportunity to really understand that. So thanks, and I just need to clarify the conversation with the mayor. In some of our neighborhoods, I know they're looking very carefully in identifying tracks, you know, that they regard as ripe for redevelopment and for absorbing increased capacity. And so can you help me understand the back and forth with the mayor about when, when is the appropriate time for them to share those learnings with the staff? Is it after the code and mapping is released? Or would you prefer some of that information in the interim? Or, you know, what's, what's the appropriate time for that?
People, organizations, groups always have an opportunity to, you know, reach out and provide information. That's definitely occurred. And so issues with respect to the map and neighborhood concerns and suggestions can certainly be channeled to staff now. But I think that in October, we will have more resources and time to really dialogue and focus in a more detailed and thoughtful way on, on neighborhood concerns. Definitely, as you mentioned, Councilmember Tovo, there are different ways of approaching council's policy direction. And I think if people throughout Austin can be thinking now about where in their neighborhood consistent with council's policy direction they would most like to see missing middle housing, I think that would be a useful exercise that will help to make the process going forward more efficient. And in October, through office hours, through the open house, and the other opportunities that we've mentioned, we'll be able to work with neighborhoods to evaluate and consider those kinds of proposals.
Great, thank you. And yeah, many of them are doing that kind of proactive work. So that's really helpful to know how it, how it meshes with, or how it will mesh with your process. Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, no, that's great. And we invite that. And also through the one-on-ones scheduled with you all this month, and then we're also starting to schedule with September, in September, to get on, to get on your calendar, because no, no doubt, there's going to be more questions. And we hope that through those meetings, through educating you on the, on the approaches we are taking to implementing the council direction, that you all will be able to help us in, in socializing that with your constituents as well, so that we can have that back and forth over the next two months and dispel, you know, some unknowns or fears or whatever they may be about, you know, how the direction is being interpreted. I think that will be very helpful. We have another blog coming out on Wednesday related to, tomorrow, related to non-conforming uses and how we're handling that in a new way based on the feedback that we've received that's been in the meetings we've been having organically over the last month. That's been something that has come up. So we decided to write about that and how we're handling it. And I think that's going to go a long way to start the process of educating of how we're, how we're proceeding.
Good, thank you.
I love the idea of that blog, as many of those as you can do. I think it'd be great. Yes, Allison.
Good morning. Welcome to the team, both of you. I wanted to ask some follow-up questions to, I think, some of the things that Councilmember Tovo raised. First of all, it's not clear to me how the community should reach out to staff if they want to reach out to them before October. Are they supposed to be writing to Anique and Brent? Is there a particular place you want those queries directed?
Yes, all that. We've received emails individually. We've received emails collectively. So I'd say myself, Brent, and Anique, if they want to copy all three of us, that would be great.
Okay. So I understand that you're speaking at a lot of meetings. Some of those are, you know, open meetings. Some of those are maybe more, more intimate. But is there a way, you know, for people to know which meetings you're going to if they want to attend and listen? There are some people who really want to follow this in quite some depth and, and if you're speaking already at places, it would be helpful for people to be able to know that to the extent that they are open and available for.
That's a good point to raise. What we might do is use like a calendar tool on the website that we have just to call out where either, or either of us might be on a panel and what organization is putting that together.
Yeah, that would be, that would be great. I am fairly concerned about the notion of one open house being sufficient. Part of how I think we had a swirl of misinformation was that those open houses, if you're not steeped in development code and the process, can be very overwhelming for people and they don't know which piece to walk away with. And it's easy to spin that in one way or another without some, you know, my experience with those open houses is there's no presentation, there's no, there's no zoning 101, there's no frame of reference. And people come to those open houses with a very different set of backgrounds. And so I think it's, it might not be productive to only have one open house. Someone may come to the open house, then they have a question, then it has to be followed up in this way or that way. And there's not really another forum where they can hear what other people's questions are, where they're not perhaps exaggerated or, you know, not necessarily framed in a constructive way. And if we can, I just, I'm hesitant that I think, I don't think having everything be an individual conversation that everyone's having without any collective conversation is necessarily going to get people to the same page. Given the timeframe that you have laid out, I'm not sure what the answer is. But I think part of how we move forward is with a collective conversation where people feel like they can bring up their concerns and somebody's listening and that it's being explained to them why a decision is being made in the direction they want or why it's being made in a direction that they don't want. And I just don't see that happening within an open house framework in a constructive way as the only venue.
Thank you for sharing that concern. And this is the type of feedback that we appreciate so that way, as we go forward and we put together the open house, we can take this feedback into consideration. There are other things that we're planning, such as district meetings, that could be more intimate settings by district as opposed to one larger open house. But we certainly welcome this type of feedback as we plan for those events.
Yeah, I just, I think that, going back to the point that Councilmember Tovo brought up, that, you know, there is, we've had a lot of conversations about the need to revise Land Development Code and about certain goals that we want to achieve. But this is a full-blown rewrite of the development code. And we're essentially saying you're going to have a month or so and two hearings to voice concerns. And, and, and I just, that is extremely accelerated and without seeing, you know, maybe the code will come back and it'll be beautiful and there won't be any issues. But I just, it's a massive undertaking and there will be errors that are made and there will be, you know, things that need to be fixed. And I'm just concerned about how we're thinking about this in terms of that engagement and where that shortcutting that process lands us at the end of the process.
Thank you, Councilmember. And what we tried to do was, of course, be responsive to the council's direction, which was to come back in October, and at the same time, offer engagement opportunities. And so when we came back with the December 4th presentation, that was because we felt that we had to have some engagement with the community as well. We realize the significance of this to the community. This is a complete rewrite of Land Development Code. However, our timeline was in response to what council direction was.
And just, I'll just add one more comment, that we are trying to have multiple points of entry for them to look to engage in this dialogue. So whether it's at district town halls, the open house, office hours, I mean, even within a constrained timeframe which we are working from, we are taking suggestions but also trying our best to ensure that there are multiple opportunities for people to provide that feedback.
But if you think about with a town hall, I mean, we get it on October 4th. I mean, how quickly are we going to be able to digest a full rewrite, to be able to present to our district the implications for our district of this? I mean, just, you know, some of us have districts that, you know, I will have 150, 200 people show up at my meeting, and we will have to be able to present, you know, what is being put forward and how we got to this place and what the implications are, totally apart for whether we agree with it or not, just to help people understand it. And to do that in a timeframe where they can still make comments more broadly, you know, that just, I'm not seeing how that happens within this timeframe that, that were presented unless it's an extremely simplified Land Development Code that looks nothing like what we've seen in the past, which it may, and perhaps that was the direction that we gave. But if I had been given draft one of Code Next and asked to explicate it to my constituents within, you know, two weeks of getting it and be able to provide them the information that they need to be able to assess it and look at it for, for how it impacts their part of the neighborhood, I just don't know that that is logistically feasible given the size of, of the rewrite.
Jimmy?
Well, I want to thank staff for all your hard work on this and getting us close to an admittedly very aggressive timeline that the council had set out in the direction. So knowing that we're getting at least a first reading by the end of this year, I think, is, is great progress. And then hopefully, we can get through that and clean it up in February and, and, and be done. I agree with Councilmember Alter on the, the community really does come to these meetings with different levels of experience and understanding of zoning and land use. And it might be interesting if these things already exist to direct the community to a zoning 101 webinar or other types of content that can help people in advance of these meetings get up to some level of understanding or, or be clear when you're having a 101 conversation versus a 201 conversation versus a 301 conversation. I think that could be really helpful. And I agree with Councilmember Tovo that, you know, the direction is different than the code, and there's going to be stuff in that that, that is going to use different terminology. But I really do look towards the direction we passed earlier this year as the, the set of compromises we came to, not all of which I personally agree with, but that I'm going to stick to as we look through interpreting this code and, and try to, try to focus our work on making sure the, the resulting complexity of legal language matches the intent of the compromises we struck as a council. And it will not stop the misinformation. The same folks who pushed Prop J and lost are still out there pushing misinformation. And I think we need to be clear with, I think it's incumbent upon the council members, myself included, that, that we be willing to have honest conversations with the public and direct conversations about what things are being said that are untrue, what things are being said that are half true, which they almost always are, and where our shared concerns are that we can address in the rewrite. So I just wanted to thank you all for that.
Any further comment?
Just to, to close, I will just reemphasize how critical that direction was that was given in May. And we are basing everything that we're doing from the staff level on that direction. And so when we do have conversations with the community, it does go back to, are there things about what you are interpreting in the staff direction that would be helpful to better understand? How do we make sure that everyone is aware of what was decided on? How do we make sure that everyone is aware of what was decided on in May? And so that's really been our North Star as we continue to move towards the code, code right. So thank you.
But I think that's good. Again, just in closing, I urge you to daylight as many of those things as you can at work sessions here, because I think it'll go a long way to making sure that people don't feel like on October 4th, they're, they're seeing things for the first time or whatever. So there's been a lot of work in this. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Anne, did you have something?
Not on this. I need to, to say something about another item.
That's fine. Thank you. Thank you guys very much. All right, do we want to have the home assist update? Do you want to say something before we do?
Yeah, but just, no, I just wanted to say that I pulled item 92, but it didn't make it on this list, so I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. I probably pulled it a little late.
You did, but it's on my list.
Gotcha, okay.